Okay, welcome to the Village of Wapinjers Falls Special Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for today, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. It's 2:30. So I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I am going to share the agenda.
Want me to do the roll call?
Yes, would you do the roll call, John?
Mayor Alexander.
Here.
Trustee Marka John. Absent, trustee Catalano.
Here.
Trustee Niznick.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Here.
Trustee Panessa.
Here.
Trustee Lammers. Absent, village attorney Wallace.
Here.
Okay, so today we are going to start with a, the item which is to approve the acquisition of new radios for the village fire department. We have our fire chief, Adam Van Tassel, here with us. Adam, would you tell us what's going on?
Mayor, can you, can you make this the second item?
Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is the approval of the easement for Central Hudson Gas and Electric, the gas main along West Main Street. Do you want to talk to us about what's going on, Craig?
On this particular call, we have Luke Mangels from Central Hudson and we also have village engineer John Zarowski. So I will turn it over to Luke to explain, you know, what, what's going on from Central Hudson's perspective. I'd ask that the, the map or the easement agreement that you're going to be voting on at the end of the presentation be attached because it has the mapping of the proposed easement, which I understand is going to be a regulator station over on, right near Canale Field in, on the town of Poughkeepsie side that will service 150 households in the village. Luke, are you here?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
And I can hear you.
Okay. So first I think I want to say thank you. I mean, a big thanks to everybody for coming together today. Big thank you to Craig and John for helping us through the process and, and moving it through. You know, we very much appreciate it. Big picture of what's going on. Also with me today is Brianna Peak. She is our section leader for the regulator group. We also have Daniel Farnin, who is representing major consultant who put together the site plan for us. From the large picture there, we would like to cite the regulator station at the present location here that's being shown on the screen right now. It is a convergence of a medium pressure line and a low pressure line. It is conducive for being able to tie into both systems, which is exactly what the regulator needs to do. What this regulator will enable us to do is basically backfeed the, the village proper system and eventually be able to make the necessary tie over from the pipe that's further down on what's main that needs to be relocated to the other side of the street to allow restoration efforts over there. If you guys have any specific questions or, you know, I can help get you to the right people with Brianna or, or Dan. Or if you have anything for me, I could take it from there and expand on anything or I don't know what you guys would like to hear.
This is going to be temporary, correct?
It could, it could go both ways. Whatever the village would prefer is what we can do. We could do, make it temporary in that when we swap over the pipe, we could take it all out. There is some benefits into building redundancy into the system. Again, this would solely provide gas service to about 150 constituents, 150 of our gas customers within the village. Where, you know, we're very desirous of being able to move that pipeline where the, some of the DOT things are going on. So if it's, if it's better for you guys to do it temporary, we'll most certainly do it temporary. If it's something that you guys are willing to have it stay there, we can build a redundancy into the system and have it stay as well. So again, we're, we're open to whatever it is that the village would prefer.
Is there any preference on the part of the village or John Zarowski, do we have to, do you have anything you want to tell us before we speak to that?
I did look at the drawings. Everything seems to be in order. They've responded to my comments. They've added screening. They're going with the standard black fence that the planning board is always asking for. They've also tried to stay away from the, the big spruce trees that are right there. So they've been very responsive in getting the drawings updated and for comments.
I just got one more question. Now how far does this sit back from that house?
I don't have an exact measurement, but it is on the other side of their vacant lot. So that house that's there has the, the lot that it's built on. Then it has another lot where I believe there was some, like some garden elements and things like that. So it's completely on the other side of that vacant lot parcel that that owner does have.
Okay, possibly screening it, quick like a screening up. So maybe that resident can't see it.
Yeah, so we.
If we're going to leave it there full time.
Yeah, we, we have some proposed arborvitae plantings that would be between, between the fencing of the regulator station and the existing fence that's there that the property owner has.
Okay.
We could, we can make that a little bit more robust. Or, you know, if there's something else that the, the board would prefer be there, as long as it's not something that grows incredibly large that we'd have to worry about kind of falling into there or, or a root system growing into it, you know, we'd definitely be open to it.
Yeah. I'd mean, I'd have no problem as long as there was a screenage up that the, so the resident wouldn't be able to see it all at all times.
Yep. And also along that fence line, the, the resident already has some kind of substantial plantings there from the, the last time I was there. So I think with those plantings and the, the arborvitae's that are being proposed, I think it should, it should cover pretty well.
Okay.
The drawing that I'm showing is, can you see that, Kevin?
Yeah, yep.
So you can see the plantings?
Yep.
Okay, good.
They're the circle things, correct?
Yes.
Yep. We're also very cognizant that the cemetery utilizes your guys' property for access in and out. So if those other row of arborvitae's are not, you know, not conducive, we can, we can move them or whatever it is that the, the cemetery would like as well.
Okay, any other comments? So you also looked at the easement? John Zarowski?
Yeah, we reviewed the meets and bounds and the description and it's, it's accurate.
Okay. Um, okay, so Craig, you want to talk to us?
Yes. So, excuse me. All right, Mayor, has anybody, does any other trustees have any other questions before, you know, I talk? Or it goes to, you know, for a vote for action? Okay, so if it's, whatever the pleasure of the board is, I have a proposed resolution for the board to adopt the Central Hudson Plan. And because it is on village property and a legal easement has to be prepared, whereby you're going to be authorizing the mayor to sign the easement on behalf of the village. And the, and Central Hudson will countersign and they will be responsible for filing the necessary paperwork and easement with the county clerk's office. So basically they will have rights over this particular property if it, it turns out to be a permanent, a permanent easement. And, and this particular improvement is going to have permanence for the residents of the village. All right, so Mayor, if you want to get the resolution for the board and read it into the record, that'd be great.
Yep, yep. Share and then I'm going to ask Todd to set up the resolution.
At this time, it's only temporary though, right? Is that what you said earlier?
The resolution we have says permanent.
Luke, is it, is it, at what point in time are you, is, is it going to be determined as to temporary or permanent?
Like we could, we could do either or. I do think there's benefits for the, for the residents in the village to have the redundancy built in. It would allow, and Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong, it would allow gas to flow from two different directions into the village. You know, I think there, that would be, you know, beneficial for the village. However, if it's, you know, we definitely need the, to get the, the pipe that's located, relocated, that's further down on Main Street. So, you know, it's, I think it's kind of up to, if you guys don't want it there for, for, for the permanent aspect of it, we can make the, the, you know, the relocation happen further down on Main Street. You know, or if the, the redundancy into the village is something that's desired to stay, it can most certainly stay. You know, we just really want to make sure that we get that other pipe relocated. So we're trying to take the path, path of least resistance and make sure we get that work completed.
So John Zarowski, is there any reason why we might need that space? That real estate?
Well, right now that, that is part of the original entry to the water plant that has not been used in years. We have any plans to do anything more, but and, and just out of precaution, I had asked that, and Central Hudson did agree to move the gas lines so that they are as far away as from the water lines that are there that they, and me. And should there ever need to be maintenance, we're crossing them perpendicular to minimize disturbance. So they're working with me and Luke is right about redundancy. The reason this is an emergency is because of the wall collapse on West Main Street.
This is Brianna Peak with Central Hudson. I just want to add that we did meet with Pete Pajee and Ken Cruzey about this location and they gave us various detailed information on where the water lines were. And, and we kind of talked it out. They actually, I think Pete might've even been around when they were installing it or retiring a few things. So we did talk in depth about where those were located and how we could avoid, you know, even exposing them.
So as far as permanency, the one thing that would be forbidden from a legal standpoint is that the village could never utilize that property, that easement area that is, it's a very limited easement area for a permanent structure. So Central Hudson would have the right, obviously, to go on our property to fix, maintain, or do whatever needs to be done with respect to the pipeline all from the street as well as the gas regulator station. And the, it, it would, I don't think that based on the proposed use, it would inhibit the village from a use that we could otherwise put to that property because that property is right on the edge of our, on the, on the southern edge, I believe, of the, of the property line. And it borders a private property owner. So it would have been from a development standpoint, dead space regardless.
Yeah, I think the only that we could have used it for, or could use it for would be entrance and exit out of the, the water treatment facility property. But I would say that the, in my opinion, the, the redundancy for the gas service going into the village is of better value than that.
And this is, this is Luke from Central Hudson too. So our easement is, we, we did not structure it to be an exclusive easement. So what that means is that the village could still utilize the access that we'll put in if they want to extend off of that at some point in the future for their access into the, into the water treatment facility. So that, you know, that should be a win-win as, there as well.
Can we, but we can't fit around the, the, I mean, we, a vehicle couldn't go around that Central Hudson regulator, could it?
I believe it, I believe it could.
Oh, okay.
Yep, absolutely. Cause the way that we tucked it in, I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's, it's basically up against the fence that's currently there and that spruce tree. So we kind of tucked it in to be as minimal impact as, as possible.
Okay. Right, are there any other discussion from the board? Regarding temporary, permanent entrance and exit?
So it sounds as if the only thing we could use it for is an entrance or an exit and, and they're saying that they'll give us that anyway?
Correct.
Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't looked at, John Zarowski, are you able to tell us if that's your opinion?
Well, right now, Central Hudson's layout, I have a way in front of the fence as part of their layout. So.
Okay, so, and if we ever wanted to, we could drive in and out of the actual well field?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think that takes care of that. So any other things we want to bring up now?
No, Mayor, but I would, you know, if it's the pleasure of the board to act on the resolution, you have a resolution before you to adopt the, the grant of easement. And that's purpose pretty much of, of this special meeting with respect to this item. And if it's, if every, if it meets the trustees' approval, I would ask the board to, and recommend that, that it be approved.
Okay, the board's okay with it? We'll go ahead.
I just noticed it's a, a leave out that there's old trustees on this resolution.
Yeah.
When I read that, I'll correct it.
Okay, on the other one too, that's coming up.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution. This is a resolution authorizing grant of permanent easement to Central Hudson Gas and Electric for installation of natural gas regulator station. Whereas Central Hudson needs to construct a natural gas regulator station to improve its ability to provide to more reliable natural gas service to the property of the Village of Wapinjers Falls and its other customers in the Village of Wapinjers Falls. And whereas Central Hudson has determined that village-owned property on Canale Way designated as Dutchess County Real Property Tax Map Parcel ID 615801332590 would be a suitable location for the construction of the natural gas regulatory station. And whereas Central Hudson has requested that the village grant to it a permanent easement and right-of-way for the purpose of allowing Central Hudson to construct a natural gas regulator station and its inlet and outlet pipelines and other appurtenances in, upon, over, under, and across the village property on Canale Way, which is presently used for the water and other spaces. And where trustees has the authority to grant an easement over village property pursuant to village law, section 1102. Whereas Central Hudson and the village have negotiated the terms of an easement and right-of-way that has been reviewed and approved by the village attorney. And whereas the proposed action is a type 2 action under CCR pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C9 and 617.5C13. And the Board of Trustees of the village believes that the granting of the easement is in the best interest of the village. It would be resolved if this passes that the board hereby approves the easement and right-of-way with Central Hudson that is annexed here too. And it would be further resolved that the village board hereby would authorize said easement to be signed by the mayor on behalf of the Village of Wapinjers Falls. So if the board is in agreement, could I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Catalano. And I'm going to do a roll call. Trustee Huber.
Hi.
Trustee Marka John, is he here?
No, he's not.
Okay, trust, so Mark him absent. And trustee Niznick?
Hi.
Trustee Panessa?
Hi.
Trustee Catalano?
Hi.
Trustee Lammers? And he's absent. And I will vote aye.
And we'll, we'll, we'll change the roster list, trustees. And Luke, the only thing I would ask is that you, you know, if there's any follow-up, I'll have the mayor sign the, the easement. But somebody, can somebody, you know, pick it up or, you know, do the logistics to get it filed?
Yeah, absolutely. I can, let me know when it's done and either myself or a member of my team will come down, pick it up. And we can, we can facilitate the recording with Dutchess County.
Okay, and when do you think the work would commence?
As far as I understand, the regulator station is already built and sitting in our Kingston shop, sitting on rigging blocks, ready to come down. So we do already have verbals from the DOT for our permitting. And that verbal is contingent upon us, you know, having the signed easement. So I think we will be ready to go pretty soon. Brianna, is there anything on scheduling that you know more about when we could start?
We could start as early as mid next week.
Okay.
And the, the residents going to be impacted by any traffic issues?
I don't, I don't foresee any because we're going to be, a majority of our construction will be on the property. There might be a little bit of traffic. There is some work on the shoulder, but I don't see us having to close a whole lane of traffic right now. But if it, if there was, it would probably be one day.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
No, thank you all.
Okay, so we'll get this signed and we'll get in touch with you. And I'm going to go on to the next item if that's okay.
Great. Thank, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of radios. We have with us Chief Adam Van Tassel. You want to talk to us about radios?
Yeah, I, I just unmuted myself. Yeah, like I said last meeting, it's, we have radios that are 14 years old, they're end of life. We tried to get a grant. We didn't get the grant unfortunately. And it's just something we need. We currently have about six radios that are out of service. And, you know, it's something we need. It's a life and death piece of equipment that we need. That's pretty much it. I mean, it's numbers. The total was 85,971. They're giving us 11,600 in a trade-in. It's a total 74,371. They, I was able to get Motorola to extend the trade-in. It was only good until the 30th. They, they extended it to, to now, to today to see, to see how the vote went. It was a trade-in. We trade in all our old, our old radios to get credit towards the new ones. And they're giving us $11,600 towards the purchase.
All right, and this was, any questions of the trustees?
This could be payable over five years, you said, Adam?
Yes, I believe Jess is going through real lease and it was over five years deferred until June of 2021 for a first payment.
Yes, so the, the village also had its treasurer look at another leasing option, which would not start until June 1st. Todd, would you go get Jessica and see if she could talk to us about a second leasing option?
Sure.
Hey Jessica, could you, so Chief Adam Van Tassel, talk to us about the lease deal that was offered by Real Lease, right, Adam?
Yeah, I believe that's, that was the one Jess had.
And so you actually compared the two, that lease with the one that we might be eligible for?
Adam had gotten one through Motorola.
Okay.
But the one through Real Lease was cheaper.
Okay, oh, so that's the one Adam was talking about.
Yeah.
So could you talk to us about the two deals that you recommend that the board consider?
So there's the two options from Real Lease. It's either a four-year payment for $20,070 a year, starting June 1st, 2021. Or it's $16,345 for a five-year lease, starting June 1st, 2021. The interest rates are the same for both. It's just whether or not we want to pay over four years or over five years.
And they both start on June?
Yeah.
Okay. And one option is that we could put a down payment down or the other option is without the down payment, right?
So both of those are without a down payment.
Okay.
There would be different payment options if we did a down payment.
Okay, so I think the.
I don't know if we have the money in the fire department budget for a down payment.
I would say probably, probably not for, based on my records.
Okay, so I think you're, you're recommending Jessica and Adam that we do the no down payment. And the board can decide whether or not it's four years or five years, starting June 1st.
Is the other one that we have from Real Lease that shows a $66,000?
That's what, pardon? That's with the down payment.
Oh, okay, because it didn't, it didn't mention that. That's why I was curious.
Okay, so is, does the board have any desire to do four or five years? I prefer the five-year.
I would say five years to keep it cheaper. Paying is down lower.
And the life of the equipment is obviously, the last groups lasted 14 years. So I would be comfortable with a five-year payment.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Yeah, I was just gonna say that, mayor, the life of the radios is it probably a minimum ten years, probably, but you, you, obviously, we've gotten longer out of the other ones, but it's about ten-year life, I would say.
Does it come with a servicing contract?
Motorola has servicing, it doesn't, doesn't come with a servicing contract per se, but there's warranties on the radios. Um, and we get all the programming software for it, we uh, that would limit how much we would spend on programming. Um, and all the chargers, everything, pretty much everything comes with it. And about a one-year warranty, I think, for each radio.
And this is not subject to procurement policy due to the fact that um, there's a state contract bid um, that was verified on, on the uh, o- officer purchasing list. So uh, that was the way to avoid having to uh, send this out to bid.
Correct.
Okay, um, hold on.
It's only a difference of thirteen hundred dollars between the four and the five years, so.
Times twelve, right?
Twenty thousand to sixteen?
So, it's four thousand?
No, I need you to unlock your phone, I need to see the contract. So it'd be like three thousand seven hundred-ish difference in payment? Right? So we're talking about the difference in the lease payments?
Yes.
Yeah, so twenty thousand to sixteen.
Okay, so four thousand dollars. All right, so um, is the board uh, ready to uh, entertain a motion for a five-year lease on the um, the radios as proposed? For a total amount of uh, a po- total purchase amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents?
I'll make it.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the, the um, hold on, I'll share this.
Before you read that, mayor, the, this um, particular contract does not contain a prepayment penalty. So if um, the, you know, if it, it's advisable to prepay or add you know, a little bit more to the um, to the payment, we can pay it down in four years if the, you know, if things change over time as far as fiscal, our fiscal uh, situation.
Okay, so this, the resolution?
Yep.
Okay, so um, whereas the village fire departments require reliable portable radios to ensure the safety of personnel and prompt response. Whereas the treasurer has investigated various suppliers and options for the acquisition of the portable radios. And advises that a four- or five-year lease term is the most economical way for the village to acquire the radios. And whereas treasurer has received various quotes and recommends the proposal from ROC Leasing LLC doing business as the Real Lease in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents to be paid over four or five years at the option of the village. Whereas the board believes that the granting of the, uh, excuse me.
Yeah, mayor, this read, whereas I, there's another addition out here, but the, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wappingers Falls believes that leasing the portable radios is in the best interest of the village. That's, that's the new and approved version, it didn't make it up there.
And be, be resolved if we passed it, that the board hereby would approve the municipal radio lease proposal from uh, Real Lease in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents. It's the next year too, and also, it would also be resolved that we should purchase them to correct. So uh, could we get a motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Panassa, I'll do a roll call, trustee Huber?
Hi.
Trustee Billy Marko John is absent, trustee Kamornik? Excuse me, trustee Niznik?
Hi.
Trustee Panassa?
Hi.
Trustee Catalano?
Hi.
And trustee Lammers is absent? And I will vote aye. Okay, so um, I think that concludes the uh, published portion of the agenda, I do think uh, that we, I do think we have some other items to discuss, are these matters of an executive uh, session nature? Because they're personnel bargaining or contractual?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so could we go into, could we get a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing uh, this item?
I'll make that.
The second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Huber, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, very good, so we'll go into executive.